Hi, how are you?
Okay, let's call the order at town Lloyd, a regular meeting for May seventeen, two thousand twenty-three. Councilman Ackmody, please lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all. Thank you all very much.
Oh, okay. Got it? Thank you. Okay. Make sure I got the right. Got two of them, that's why. Okay, so we'll start off with the town board reports. Nothing on the audit committee. Beautification, Councilman Ackmody.
As of right now, we're still waiting for the hanging baskets. I believe there were fifteen purchased to show up. Richie Rosa, myself, on Friday morning, we're gonna take down all of the banners that are that are up on the highway here and there, and we're gonna put them all up on on Milton Avenue on the light poles. Because there's a resolution here, it's gonna become Veterans Way. So we're trying to have that done before the Memorial Day parade. The the fountain has been turned back on. Thank you very much, Peter Belizzi. We did some planting flowers and things around there. It actually looks pretty nice. That's kind of about it at the moment on that.
Let's ask you a question if you don't need answer. The Veteran Day Way, I think is a great idea.
I'm sorry, say again?
The Veterans Way, I love the idea, I think it's great. And I've asked you before, I wasn't able to get ahold of Christina. For a family that had a veteran, they want one of those flags? You know how they go about getting one?
She's been taking care of that.
So you just have to contact her?
Yeah, Christine's a contact.
Okay, you wanna do Highland Landing Park, Lenny?
As far as the park goes, I met down there with the insurance adjuster for the damage that was done with the car. I talked to him yesterday morning. I'm still waiting for the guy to custom bent all the all the pipes and rails. He's not gonna be available until next next month, the beginning of next month, hopefully. So hopefully, we can get that done, or we can get that bill turned in and and get paid for that damage. Possibly be working down in the basement on Friday to get the water and everything connected for the bathrooms. But unfortunately, we can't, couldn't open the bathrooms, even if they would be available on Friday, because the railing got knocked down, so we can't open up the stairs until the railing is repaired. But we're working on that. Hopefully, next month or whatever, get a little bit more of the work done on the inside of the building. So we're we're going along with that. We still have one more dock to put in. Somebody else was supposed to do it, but they called up and said they couldn't. So I have to get ahold of Jerry and see if, God bless him, he can send down a big wrecker so we can just pick it up, spin it around, and set it in the water. So we're working on that as far as the landing. Other than that, they're mowing the grass on every Friday. Place looks pretty good. People seem to be picking up after themselves, I'm happy over that. What else we got? I concede to Peter.
Okay.
First thing is the bathroom is one-on-one New Pauls Road. I purchased new locks to put in, contacted Frank, and and the cleaning company are gonna build there twice a week. Be Friday, Monday, or Tuesday. And I plan on opening it the twenty-sixth of Memorial Day weekend, open them back up. This weekend, we have Maze Fest on the walkway in the rail trail. Hopefully, the rain holds off a little bit. On June third, at nine AM, we have our annual meeting breakfast at one-on-one New Pauls.
What day is that?
June third, Saturday.
That's Spring Fest date?
Yeah, I know, but that's also Trails Days, that's why in our annual, you know. When we do it. It only takes an hour, if that. Yeah, so that's at nine AM. So also, I have There's a piece of property that's joined us, the rail trail behind what used to be Countess Mary Ty, belonged to Ruth Ann Torson. She had tried to sell it a number of years ago, but transition and the cost of it would have been too high. Now it's up at Ulster County, Ulster County is, we're gonna put it up for auction for six hundred and forty-one dollars.
That's the tax, the taxes.
So looking at that, that kind of is beyond, behind the the water tower at the pump station and where the Scal project is, it joins property we already have. It's landlocked, you really can't do anything else with it.
So Dave, is there way, is there?
I'm looking, I don't see it.
Can we ask the county for?
It's a triangle, it looks like an arrow.
Quarter acre.
So, so I talked to the county on another parcel, which is the one Joan Joan and I were talking about at Brandy Rees Park. Because what happened there is, the entrance from Max Lane, where there's two owners for it. They both own fifty percent. So Palisades Park Commission owns fifty percent, and there was another owner who's defaulted. So they put that up for closure. So I called the county last week, and they said, well, you can buy it for the owed, if a town wants it, they could buy it for the owed taxes. The owed taxes were about eleven thousand dollars. I said, but realistically, since Palisades Park has never paid taxes on it, you should just give it to us as a town and let us go drive it. And then, today, we found some deeds that kind of showed it being turned over as a highway road that we want you to look through.
Yeah, I had to email you, you haven't looked through it yet.
Yeah, so, so that's just a different subject, but I just wanted to bring you up to speed on. So what the county says is, if you want any of these, you can they won't go up for auction if the town wants to pay the taxes on it, so.
So this is six hundred and?
This one's here is only six forty, we might just go do it.
Let's do it.
That's my take.
I would advise, I'm good with, are you guys good?
Do we need a motion?
We need to, we need, what she told me was, we would need to send her a resolution saying that the town board has agreed to do it. So I don't know if we wanna do a verbal motion, or whether we're gonna wait till June seventh.
Why don't we just vote on it, and Sean can write the resolution later and submit it to them?
Yeah, we can do that, I mean, you can do a resolution to, it's a pretty simple resolution.
So, so let me, what's the, give me that, what's the amount of taxes again? What's the exact amount?
Six ninety-four?
Six forty-one.
Six forty-one.
So let's, let's just make it six forty-four, or whatever's owed, close to, because I don't wanna find out it's six forty-seven and we don't get by.
Let me do this, so can I get a motion to buy the said parcel behind Countess Mary, so adjacent to the rail trail, and you can get the right SPL number in there?
Motion.
For, for six hundred forty-one dollars or thereabout, from the Ulster County Auction.
Second.
Okay.
Who first, you motioned it?
Oh, Lenny vote, Lenny motioned it.
Whatever. Okay, Lenny Mazzetti, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Okay. So we'll get that resolution written up.
Thanks, Peter.
What I'll need, Mayor Bell, is I'll need to notarize.
Do you have any ideas for the resolution?
Okay. It made sense, Peter and I looked at that today. So for, that's what we figured, for six hundred forty-one dollars, it was, wasn't worth trying to.
We don't want somebody else getting it, and then we have an issue.
That was the point, same with this other one, we don't want somebody else getting it, because it's the best entry.
Do you have a motion for that one too, or?
No, because we have some research doing that one. There's like multiple owners, there's multiple deeds, deed changes, that's why we need you to look through it. Yeah. This one's a, that one's a little, little different, so, thanks, Peter. So we'll move forward with that. Lenny, we skipped the planning board.
No.
Your meeting's tomorrow, I think.
Unfortunately, my list is in the car, my car's not, not here. The last meeting was mostly everybody would, short-term rentals and all that, everything was passed. I think one was tabled, couple of people are coming back. And the biggest part of the meeting was about the addition to, which used to be Costa Apple out there. The previous owner was in there, and I guess the septic system is actually on his property, but he's aware of that. He just had a few issues with what they're doing, but it seems like everything on that's going forward. That's really all I have.
We'll make it the last one. Yeah, we'll, we'll make it the last one, whatever. I think it ends with H, we'll just make it resolution I. Oh, we got O already, okay. So we'll make it O, resolution O.
Not confirmed.
Yeah, okay. All right, thanks, Lenny. Let's go, I know Mike's out. I do wanna say, though, I know from the ECC, they did get a grant to do some, and there's actually a contract in here. They did get a grant to do some environmental work, looking at species, and you'll see the resolution in here for Choddy Lake, so we'll cover that later. I know Mike was aware of that. John, we wanna go on to events committee and your stuff?
Okay. Three, three items. This weekend, this is a, it's a joint event. It's the Highland Art Day. It'll be held downtown. The Events Committee and the Beautification Committee, they teamed up and presenting Highland Arts Day. They asked school students to draw and present their best description of spring. And local businesses will be displaying other art items throughout the town for both Saturday and Sunday. Right after that, coming up June third, which is, sounds like it's gonna be a busy day around town, is Spring Fest. And again, that's Saturday, June third, it starts at eleven. There's two segments of it, actually. It's eleven AM to six PM, and that's the, the way they've been doing Spring Fest, with the streets closed and the street vendors. And then, it's extended after six PM. Forty-four fifty-five opens, and there's music will continue, and some other entertainment in the town field and the town parking lot area. So it's eleven to six, and then extended seven, seven to nine in the field. Right now, they have eighty-five plus vendors signed up, so it's a great sign up. And it looks like it'll be, be a good day. We're hoping for sunshine. Or at least no rain, no rain. And then, Fourth of July will be, Fourth of July will be on July first in Highland. We will be celebrating an old-fashioned fireworks and carnival, July first, from six PM to ten PM. And that, again, will be at the town field behind the town parking lot. Final preparations and coordination with the police and fire departments underway. And it's, this is not an events committee, but Memorial Day, in case you're not aware, the parade Legion will be hosting the Memorial Day Parade on May twenty-ninth, starts at nine, nine o'clock from Phillips Avenue, the route down through town, up by the firehouse, and these ceremonies to follow in the, in the town, and then refreshments at the Legion afterwards. So that's May twenty-ninth, at, starting at nine AM, usually wraps up eleven, eleven fifteen. That's the events. You want me to keep going? Fire Department, the Highland Fire District Monthly Report for April. They had thirty-nine alarms that they were dispatched to. Average number of firefighters per call was fourteen, highest number at any call was twenty-six. Total numbers of apparatus responses was ninety-two. The man-hours for those alarms, three hundred and ten hours. Man-hours for meetings, eighty-eight hours, man-hours for training, a hundred seventy-two, and man-hours for miscellaneous events, thirty-five. So last month, the Highland Fighter, Highland Hose Company volunteered six hundred and five hours. To the town. To the fire district, excuse me. And I'll do mobile life in a minute. Mobile life, the number of calls, about, you know, what they've been running, the hundred sixty-five calls. Again, they remain at, the last month was thirty-one percent of them were no transports. Average, combined response time was six minutes and eight seconds. I did make an inquiry, they didn't, he didn't get back to me yet, on one item. They responded in three minutes, but they weren't on the scene, sixteen minutes on the scene. So I don't, and I couldn't figure out, sometimes you look at the report, you can tell what happened when you look at the times that dispatched and multiple dispatches. This one, I didn't understand. Other than that, there wasn't any, there was one, it was twenty-nine minutes and thirty seconds, but that was a that was a community standby call. So other than that, it was pretty routine, fairly busy month. And the lighting district, I think I announced at the workshop, all the lights are in at Bridgeview. So that is complete with the four extras that we added to the community. I think that's the end of my reports.
Okay, thanks, John.
You're welcome.
Joe, on school district?
Sure, since John was talking about art, and Art Department hosted an art-wide district show at the Highland Public Library, it ended just on May thirtieth. The show featured an assortment of artwork from all the students in grades K through twelve. So maybe next year, the events committee could talk to them, and maybe maybe they're gonna have the show at the same time.
Yeah, I think the live one was started a few years back, they, they continue to do that. Like, I think they do that like four or five times a year.
I'm glad to see we're doing so, it's great for the kids, it's great for the community.
It's pretty cool.
It's pretty cool. They had former NFL player, Shemel Gray, visit Highland High School. He spoke with students about how to live their lives with purpose and with passion. Gray played for the Chicago, Chicago Bears, the Miami Dolphins, and the Buffalo Bills. He also played with the New England Patriots. He offered advice on how to achieve their goals, how hard work can make anything happen, and recommended that students surround themselves with the right people. We had a speaker come, he once said, show me your friends, I'll show you your future. So it's really important that you pick the right people to surround yourself with. I'm gonna say the Val Victorian, the Salutatorian, because they're most important for last. The district budget vote was last night. The budget was fifty-two thousand, four hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Fifty-two million, right, fifty-two million, four hundred and seventy-eight dollars and forty, forty-eight dollars. Fifty-two million, right, sorry, yeah. That passed last night, and the proposition two for buses was two hundred and sixty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars. That also passed, both passed with around five hundred and fifty votes. Also, congratulations to Alan Barone and Heather Welch for being re-elected. So I'll start with the Salutatorian. The Salutatorian for this year is Erica Angelillo. I've known Erica, this little girl, she's a great kid. She had a GPA of a hundred and two point three-three. Erica plans to attend either SUNY College Environmental Sciences and Forestry at either SUNY Binghamton or University of Vermont. She hasn't decided a specific fit major, but she's likely to do something in the field of environmental sciences. Good luck to you, Erica, and I know whatever you choose, you'll be great. The Val Victorian this year, for the class of twenty twenty-three, is Alicia Mukal. Her GPA is a hundred and three point five-eight. Alicia also is deciding on which college she wants to attend. She can either go to SUNY Binghamton, SUNY New Pauls, or SUNY Stony Brook. In the fall, she plans on majoring in biochemistry and following a pre-med track. So good luck to her also, whatever she decides on going. When you're a doctor someday, hopefully you'll come and practice here in Highland. And that concludes my report.
All right, thanks, Joe. Okay, and the only one I have on here is the Lloyd Community Development Committee. We did meet last month. We're in a process of updating the bylaws. We hope to have them done for our next meeting, and then we'll focus on marketing that program again. Because there is money there for low-interest loans to businesses that used to be quite, quite common, and it's kind of slacked off in a few years. So hopefully, we can get that back going. So that's all I have going on that. We'll move on to old business, Tilson Toc. There's a big hole in the road right now. Right in the, right past, right, right at, across from Tilson, across from Toc. So they closed the road last Thursday, as planned. They put the light at Chapel Hill Road. Kind of some mixed reactions initially. We put it there for safety reasons, because we didn't want people who weren't familiar with making that left turn to go out there and not be ready for it. So that part of it worked pretty well. It didn't, you know, we put probably two thousand more cars going that way every day than we used to have. So we've been working with the timings of the lights, and we adjusted them this morning. And somebody just sent me a picture at six oh five, there was only one car, that intersection. So the, the timing from four to six-thirty going west, and from seven to nine in the morning, we've adjusted. So we'll watch it, we'll continue to watch it, and if it needs changed again, we'll, we'll, you know, we'll monitor through the counts, and we'll continue to iterate till we get it right. But that was a big piece of, we wanted to do that before they actually closed the road. They did close it. They've been digging there. Focus right now on, they dug up some pieces, and we are finding some of the water conflicts that we thought we'd find. We found a big one today, but we were able to get around it. Found some valves, so I think we'll continue doing that. We'll continue to, you know, I believe the gas lines have all been moved, all the gas mains have been moved. But, you know, there's five to six months of work left there, so it's not something that's, you know, we're gonna close for a week, and the project's gonna be done. We're moving an entire road, a tire, culvert, and an entire bridge. So it's pretty much the rest of the summer for sure, and probably another month or so after that. The key is to get it done this year, and I think when it's done, everybody will appreciate it, so.
Dave, I know you gave an informational meeting at the, at the firehouse on the whole project.
Right.
Could you just reiterate, because there's so much criticism and talk on the reason Vineyard is closed, because I know people are saying, why is it closed? I've driven down it.
Well, yeah, Joe, so the reason it's closed, the reason I think people were complaining is because we closed it last Thursday, and you didn't see a lot of activity right in Vineyard. But part of it was getting the the, the barriers in place, getting the equipment lined up. Because if you don't close it maybe a day or so before you actually start digging up the road, people aren't used to it, and they'll start coming through, and a construction worker will get hit. As of Monday morning, they've been digging up the road. If you go there now, there's a big hole there. So, yeah.
That's why I'm asking you to.
Yeah, so part of, part of it, I think, was, hey, you closed the road, and you're not working there. But they are working there, they are really working there now. But it did look like last Thursday and Friday, actually in the road, you probably could have left a lane or so open, but then you'd have to restation all the barriers and all the equipment, so.
They, and again, I know you know the answers to this. The, the other thing is, people are saying, oh, this is gonna be years of tied up. There's a, we, we, September, we're supposed to be?
It's gonna be probably closer to November, December. With all the utility work, there's, if you, if you go up there now and look with the road dug up, you'll see a lot of piping. And the town didn't always have the best mapping from sixty years ago that was passed on, so some of the stuff they're finding by trial and error, unfortunately. And when you find it, you gotta figure out how to engineer around it. That's kind of what they did today, and luckily, today, we're able to come up with a good solution. But it's gonna be down most of the rest of this year. But it won't go into next year. If I can help it. Lenny's heard me say it in the meetings with the contractor. You know, one, I don't want you to close my roads unless you're working. And secondly, I want you out of here as early as humanly possible.
And Dave, why couldn't they, another question I've seen come up. Why couldn't they do half the road and let people use it as a one-way?
Because of utilities underneath it. Tips, like a lot of the water pipes, remember where the water plants up on the reservoir road? Right, and water comes up from the river, and water gets distributed back all through there. So that was kind of your key intersection for all those connections. You got like eight or ten valves there, and, you know, if you dig up half of it, you can't shut the valve off to work on the other half.
Right, so I, so I think that, and I'm glad you answered that as a supervisor, because I think the reality is the board didn't close that road just to be mean, or close that road because we just wanted to do all the work at once, it's because we had no choice of any other way to do it.
And it's not something also that you can do. Most of the work, I mean, they're working up on Tilson with some of the drainage, some of the walls that they had to replace when they moved people's property. But in that intersection, a lot of it actually has to be serial. You know, you have to replace the pipes, then you have to put in the, the piers, you have to drill the holes, put in the piers, then you have to put in the culvert, you have to reroute the stream for a few days. So it's a lot serial, and you can only get so many people in there at one time also, so. So, look, it's a, it's a big job, as I've been telling people. It's a, it's a big inconvenience. What we can hope for is to get it done this year and it come out the way we expect it to come out, which will be, you know, an aligned road and, you know, nice sidewalks, nice retaining walls, et cetera, so.
And it's overall safe, just a safer intersection.
Yeah, way safer intersection. That's our third highest accident rate point in the town. Okay, so, yeah, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna do all we can to keep moving it forward. Big project, though. Anything else on Tilson Talk? Any other questions? Okay, um, let's move on to the pavilion. You, you guys heard from John last week that we didn't get any bids. Some of the reasons were some of the complexity and the different parts of the bid, et cetera. So we've kind of made it much more simple now. What we're actually doing is we're gonna get all the excavation work done and all the water sewer work done. And then we're gonna bid out the cement piece, which is the pad, and then we're gonna bid out the actual building. So we want to get those steps done in that sequence.
We're staying with the same design and plan?
Stay with the same design, um, but we, we think doing it this way, we could put the pieces in and then, you know, if we have time left at the end of this year, we'll continue on with the storage space in the bathrooms. If not, we'll just hold them until next year.
What, what is the material list, just the material list gonna cost? Cause that's, if you're staying with the same design.
Well, it's.
We have to something, don't we?
What's that? It's, well, here's, here's what I think is gonna, what we're gonna find, Joe. The excavation and the sewer work, which we'll do, will be our in kind to match some of the grants. The cement pad, we figured all the cement work is gonna be close to forty, thirty-five, forty thousand, maybe less. Yeah, whatever, I'm just.
And that's, and.
I was told under twenty.
And the town's gonna donate all the pipe, piping and.
We're gonna, we're gonna pay for that out of our in kind.
And what would that, so is the piping and gravel and?
It's, it's not that much. Well, the piping's six, seven hundred dollars. We know what that is. The gravel, I don't know, we have to get a, Richie's supposed to invoice it for us so we know what it is. Cause we gotta have it to turn it in for the grant.
You're talking about two hundred thousand in materials to build the place and then with labor?
Uh, no, no, so the cement thing, we, as John said, he heard twenty, I've heard thirty, so it's gonna be.
Concrete contractor, uh, last Friday and I said, just give me a ballpark. He said, should be twenty or less, eighteen to twenty.
So, so. And then you got the structure. Now, when they sell you the structure of these companies, they'll sell it with the labor, right?
So you're doing a, you're doing a modular now?
Huh?
You're doing modular, you're doing, you're not.
No, no, they sell, they sell you the.
It's kind of kitted.
Kind of kitted, they bring it and they put it up.
It's a kit we're buying now.
So we think that.
So the plans that we have were in a kit that was stick built? It was a kit?
Yeah, stick, it's gonna be stick built from a kit, but it's.
It's modified. That's kind of, that's the way I look at it.
So we're not, we're not building the exact same one that we had the plans for, that we had the.
Close, yeah, pretty close.
Yep.
So a company's gonna make that in a kit for us, is what you're saying?
Yeah, that's how they do it.
Yeah.
And then, so, so between the kit and the labor, that's probably close to two hundred K, we're thinking. And then, um, you know, we can decide what we do with the rest of the building, whether, like I said, the bathrooms, et cetera. We know we got a hundred twenty five thousand dollar grant and I applied for another hundred thousand with the county that we're pretty sure we'll get. So we have two hundred twenty five K plus our in kind, uh, to go towards it and then we'll have to come up with the rest.
Okay.
And, uh, just Tuesday, I have a, have a meeting, cause Patty Brooks, uh, what it was, Brooks and Brooks, they donated. They did all the mapping. In fact, I got new maps today. I brought one to Richie Clots, since he's doing the excavation. Tuesday morning, we have a meeting with Patty, uh, Brooks, Sean, the architect. I invited Adam and Richie Clots and myself to make sure all the elevations are right for, because since there's gonna be bathrooms, the sewage, the pitch of the sewage is key. So that meeting's happened, happening Tuesday. And then actually tomorrow morning, I'm meeting with that community group that does volunteer construction for communities. So I'm meeting with them tomorrow and we'll see if we can tap into that resource and save some money.
So, so we're gonna, we're gonna move forward in this, this way and we'll bring every stage, we'll bring forward to the board what the next step is. And we'll go from there.
Can we just talk about one thing on old business? I'm concerned and you mentioned it, just wanna put it out there for people to know. Before we know it's gonna be budget season, so it's important that the status of that new position we're gonna create, that's gonna be part of, you know, the housing administrator, helping the accountant and helping the budget person, where are we at with that position?
Trying to find the, the job description for it. Hopefully we have it either this week or beginning of next week.
So we might, we might be able to create the position at, in our workshop.
I wanna do it next month, yeah.
Perfect, thanks.
Okay, uh, new business, Tony Williams Field Parking Lot Update. We are, we will be getting the finalized plans this week. And these will be the plans we can use to go out to bid if we choose to do so. There was one question that they had on a catch base in there, uh, because it showed there should have been one and there wasn't. And Lenny and I went and, went and looked at it and there isn't, there's just rocks on top of it. So now he knows how to, how to, uh, send the, fix the drainage on that end. So, uh, we should have the final plans and then we can decide what to do with it, uh, next month.
So we're gonna fund it. We're not going for a grant for it.
Huh? We, we can go for a grant. I think right now we wanna get a bid. We don't know exactly how much it is. But I think we should bid that one out and then we could decide what we wanna do with it. I can't put in another grant for the county because I put the whole thing in under the pavilion.
Dave.
From what they were offering.
And I know it's all, I know it's all business to business. Where are we at with that grant company? Have they gotten us any grants yet?
They just got us the nineteen thousand that the ECC got.
They, they finally got something.
They did, they got nineteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy-seven.
Okay.
Well, the other two, they already advanced forward.
Yeah, they had others, but there's the one for the water plant, the three point, was it three point eight?
Seven.
Three point seven million that has made it to the next step.
True, might get that.
Might get that and then we're putting in, now we have the, uh, we are planning, I think you've all heard of the, from the CFA, the water, the clean water thing. We're gonna put, we're gonna put that in again. And we're gonna, also, since the water tank hasn't started construction yet, it starts in July. We're gonna resubmit that and see if we can get that again.
Good idea.
So we're gonna just keep putting them in. Um, some of them are queued up. He's, uh, he's been excited. He thinks we're gonna get a big one sooner or later and that's kind of why you use these type of guys for that. So that's where we're at right now on it.
Thanks.
Okay, we'll move forward. The privilege of the floor. Anybody here for privilege of the floor? This? Name, name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Liz Weiss from North Riverside Road. For several years now, I've been asking the town to have the lines on the pickleball courts at Barry Ann Park repainted. I never get a response back. I never get any kind of update. The lines are green on green. They're impossible to differentiate. And it makes it really difficult for the people who are playing the sport. So, uh, I don't know, I've spoken to a number of people here. Um, do you have anything?
Yeah, it's gonna be done in June.
It's gonna be done in June.
It'll be done in June per the company, who says, by the way, that the power of the lines are the standard color. And that we shouldn't be painting. We were gonna paint them ourselves. They told us not to do that. The, the color they put in there is the standard pickleball court color, so they didn't.
On a, on a, on a green tennis court?
Yes. So they are gonna, they were gonna come back, we were waiting for them to come to us and tell us when they were gonna be in the area so that we didn't have to pay extra for it. Apparently somebody outside of the town called that company. I don't know who did that, but somebody called that company. They called us and they're, first of all, they were upset that somebody was acting on the town's behalf, who shouldn't have been. Right? Because it's really like tough.
You can't make it up.
Okay. I didn't say it was. Somebody called them, so they were quite upset about that.
It was probably a frustrated pickleball.
Lenny, are you sleep, are you sleep calling again?
So, um, anyway, they, we don't know the exact date in June. They told us they would put a purchase order together and come back in June and paint them yellow. They told us, don't do it yourself, cause it will peel off.
So, so have you played on any other green courts and what color were the lines?
Pardon me?
Have you played on the other pickleball courts?
Sure.
That are green.
That are green?
No, no, that are green courts and what color are the lines on those?
I have not ever played on a green on green.
No, I'm saying, have you played on a green base court? What color were the pickleball lines?
Most of the courts I've played on are not a combination of tennis courts and pickleball courts. So there's always a contrasting color between the base of the court and the pickleball.
They were strictly just pickleball.
And I have seen them in yellow. I've seen them in blue. I've seen them in, well, well, white on green if you don't have any other lines. But up at Barry Ann, you have the option to play either tennis or.
Which was one of the concerns the company had, Joe. They didn't want you putting, they didn't want the yellow to confuse the tennis players.
Right.
So hopefully when we do this, we don't.
No, tennis people. I, I don't, I don't know anything about.
I don't either. I don't either, so.
Well, it's a really big sport. It's one of the fastest growing.
I, I've heard that. I have definitely heard that.
There are people up there almost every night now playing, which is great to see. And, um, the courts are lovely. I'm so thrilled with all the work that the town did up there. But this is a real frustration for those.
I know, I know Tom Bell, who used to take care of the parks in Poughkeepsie, moved to Virginia. He's teaching pickleball, so if you want, I can reach out to him and see what color.
It's a big, it's a big sport. I know that.
Actually, when I first brought this to the attention of the board several years ago, um, I believe that the town supervisor at the time did bring a professional in and that professional did inform him that those lines were not appropriate, that we.
I'll be, I'll be, I'll be honest with you. I've been on the board when you've been coming to about the pickleball. I supported, you know, making the new court, making it that you guys could play pickleball. But this is the first time I'm hearing about the lines.
Well, I think you have people in this room who can assure you that I have been.
You have, and we did.
Bringing this to the attention of the town for a long time.
That's correct. And, and every time Frankie's called them, we've, we've went back and forth, back and forth, so.
Well, thank you for the follow-up now and I'm hoping that in June, there will be no issue.
If not, we'll see you in July.
I'm sure you will. Thank you very much.
God bless you. Thanks for coming in.
Okay, anybody else for privilege of the floor? Okay, we're gonna move on.
We got somebody.
It's okay.
Michael Ryder.
Mike. Michael Ryder Forlea in a court, okay?
Yeah. Speak into the microphone, please. Oh, Lord, somebody can hear you.
A couple of things. It seems like I'm the one that gets talked to in the neighborhoods around here.
You're the neighborhood liaison.
I guess. Crossfit, uh, creates a lot of noise, all different hours of the day. Which, to me, I've, I've read the noise ordinance and what's in it. And it seems to me like they're constantly breaking, uh, what's in that noise ordinance. The police get called, not just by me, by several other people. They never go down. They never do anything about it, which.
They never come down, you said?
Nope. They used to in the beginning. The last two years, no. I've actually sat over there after the phone call and nobody shows up. I've been woke up at literally six o'clock in the morning to dumbbells being dropped and I'm all the way over here, right next to the parking lot. Uh, the music's going and yelling like drill sergeants, um, stuff like that. So I, I don't know how to address that, uh, if I've already dealt with the police and they're not.
Yeah, so you, have you filed a formal complaint with the, the building or the police department or the building department?
I've been to the police department several times.
Okay, so we'll check with Jim and see what he's got on record.
Yes.
He can file with the building department too, because that would be zoning, right? No, noise would be police.
Yes, it would be police.
It would be police, yeah.
Okay. We'll, we'll check with the chief.
It, it, it's all different hours. Um, I don't know how they base their schedule, but it is, it's all different hours. But extreme wise, it's six, literally six to six thirty in the morning. It'll start sometimes and it could be any day of the week and it'll go up to nine o'clock at night.
Did they, did they ever tell you why they didn't enforce it or what they found when they went there? Did they give you anything?
They say they go down there and talk to them and they turn the music down and whatnot. Now, in the beginning, when they were saying that, I would physically go over and sit there. They would turn it down, but as soon as they let them, we'd go right back up. And there's never any penalty for doing that. Like, if you read the ordinance, um, they can be summoned and I think the max fine is like two fifty or fifteen days, you know? I'm not looking, you know, do that, but I just think that the business, it's, I'm glad they're here. But I think they should keep the doors shut and, and.
You just wanna be a good neighbor.
I'm trying.
You want them to be a good neighbor, isn't it?
Yep. So that's one thing. The second thing I'm concerned about is when the assisted living is done.
Is the what?
When the assisted living gets done.
Okay.
That facility has grown more than double. We had semis coming in before they finished the first section of it. So I'm wondering what that is gonna do to these streets when they are done.
What, what do you mean to the streets?
Well, I, I literally have videos of semis parked in this intersection here, blocking it for over a half hour.
So for deliveries, that's what you're worried about?
Yeah. E- even the construction right now, I'm concerned a little bit with the safety. I've had a construction business, I'm thirty-nine years into it now. And it's unsafe for anybody walking through there right now. I literally have a video of a huge boulder coming down off that hill that landed on the, the walkway. Not to mention the damage to the walkway they're doing.
Well, they changed.
Don't you like the sidewalk closed?
What's that?
Would you like the sidewalk closed?
Um, there's so many people walking through there, um, with the machines and whatnot going. I, I don't know.
Off the construction area.
Way to push people to the other side, just to let them know that they could be seriously hurt.
So you're asking to have the sidewalk closed? We'll go up there tomorrow morning, say put up a couple of barricades.
Well, shouldn't it be barricaded anyway where you're doing?
Well, I, I don't know what their restrictions were or whatever.
With commercial outfits like that, I have never seen one that hasn't had silt fences, barricades, fencing up to keep people out of the site.
There should be some barricades.
I agree with you. Send a building department here tomorrow.
Funny you're here tonight, cause I, when I parked, I practically parked across from them and I was noticing they got the, the big hole open. They don't have anything closed in it.
Yeah, there's nothing. I mean, we put a pool in, in the area or something like that and you're digging a footing, you have to barricade.
Yeah.
That's just.
So maybe we should have Dave run up there.
With the, uh, the driveway work, they reduced the grade significantly. So maybe that will allow for the tractor trailers making deliveries to get in there? Because before it was such an incline, I know the fire trucks couldn't get up there, so it might.
The board at the time, when that was going on, said no more deliveries with semis.
I don't know, we could do that, because I don't know who delivers our, but.
Or we could, we could go check the site plan.
But I think, I think that, you know, those are good questions for Dave is, you know, our concern is if semis come in there, how are we gonna ensure that they're not gonna block traffic and be able to fit on their property, one? And number two, are they barricading the properties for the holes? What are they doing about the sidewalks? Why don't they have silk fencing up and have Dave go up there and?
Yeah, I would think you'd have a barricade. So could you get it tomorrow? Cause I won't be here tomorrow. Can you get with Dave? You get with Dave tomorrow? Okay, so Lenny will.
Anything else you're noticing about that? Cause.
Well, be, being that I live right here, I see it all.
Well, why don't you?
I've noticed thing, the last two years, this year even more, the town's getting a lot more people walking through this area to get to the rail trail.
Right.
And the traffic that's building up, the speeding in the mornings is, is unreal. And I'm not gonna mention names, but it's some people work here. Coming in at like eight oh five, trying, trying to get in the door.
I don't work here, but.
But, but, uh, the, the traffic in this area is becoming more and more, uh, we're getting more and more people. So mentioning of the sidewalks and stuff, I don't know if there's a way to do something better. We don't, or any of the other streets to make it safer for people.
So, so I gotta say, we, we are all about safety and we took care of the ice house issue. We really made sure that that was cleaned up in, in the neighborhood to make sure that, that was safe. You know, we all have emails. We can give you our emails. Lenny's your points person, he's gonna look into it tomorrow. You know, if anything else comes up, you might wanna reach out to Lenny.
Okay.
And I'll give my idea so he can talk to Dave. We can make sure that it is safe and it is being enforced.
And there's conditions on the site plan for that, so we can tell, we can just go look at the site plan, see what the conditions.
But he's, but I got a good point. I mean, I mean, we can't control if they order something.
Right.
If a tractor truck comes, but we can control that a tractor truck can fit on their lot and not have the. I mean, we can't control if they order something, if a tractor truck comes, but we can control that a tractor trailer can fit on their lot and up the road.
And that should be all part of the site plan, that's what I'm saying.
Probably any, anything is, is moving the iron in and out, that's probably what it's all about, the big trucks, as of right now.
I'm talking about deliveries when they're done.
When they're operating.
They're done, that's.
When they're done.
Operational delivery.
When they do that, they should not be able to block their roads, that's, I'm sure that's a condition of.
I agree with you, they should not be able to block.
It should be, it's, I'm sure that's a condition of site plan, and I do think John's right about the parking lot, as that's lowered, it will be easier for them.
It'll give them better, yeah.
Because right now, remember, they had to go up that hill?
Wouldn't have been able to get up there without getting hung up.
Right, so, but we would, we would check with the building department.
That may be alleviated.
And it may be a simple thing, if it's not that, that front area is designated for just their, their deliveries and not parking.
Yeah, and that's normally how they do it in a site plan, they have deliveries here, not parking here, et cetera, et cetera, so we'll check that. And, uh, and we'll check, I'm more concerned about the, the barricading door construction.
I, I'm really concerned about that, because literally when that boulder came down.
We'll, we'll look at, we'll look at.
Two kids walked through there.
We'll look at.
Five minutes after that. So I guess the noise ordinance thing with, with CrossFit.
Right, what's that?
Do I need to check, yep?
We're gonna get with the chief and find out how many calls he's got.
And, and I'm gonna be honest with you, the chief and the lieutenant are more than open, I mean, if, if they're not answering the calls or you're concerned, I think you went up there and asked for, Jimmy's up there every day, just, hey Jim, can I have a conversation with the chief? And I'm glad, I'm sure he'll have a conversation with you.
Yeah, they're very reasonable, I'm sure they'll, they'll talk to you about it.
I've, I've had a lot of conversations with.
With the chief or?
This has been going on since.
With the chief, with the chief himself?
With a slew of people up there.
Okay, but have you talked to? I think Joe's asked.
Have you talked to the chief, have you talked to Chief Janso specifically?
No, no.
That's what you need to do.
My, my concern is, is I've heard through the grapevine that they know people up there. So that's why a little more.
Doesn't matter.
We won't trust the grapevine.
It doesn't matter, I'll be honest with you, I own property right next door to there, so I'm one of your, I don't live there, but I'm one of the neighbors in the neighborhood.
Okay.
So, I hear what you're saying, I've never heard this complaint before, but regardless, if they're violating whoever they know, it has to stop, they have to conform.
Right.
With our rules and regulations, so, you know, if you wanna come to a workshop, uh, first Wednesday of every month at four o'clock, Chief Wages, Chief Janso is here, and you can bring up those questions to him if you feel more comfortable, but if you wanna have a meeting with him, I know he's, he's, uh, open to that.
Which would be your best. Probably your best avenue would be to call the police station and ask if you could meet with Chief Janso.
There is an issue with their phones right now, I'm gonna tell you that.
No, no, no.
It's, it's fixed now, okay. It was, because I.
That was a one day thing, it got fixed right away. They were cutting over that day, so we had to get a temporary number on that one day.
One more question, if they have an event, do they have to apply for a permit to do that?
If who has an event?
Same place, CrossFit.
Not if they're having it on their own park, huh?
Not if they're on their private property, they don't know.
So even if cars are parked all the way down commercial, this parking lot's full, literally.
Is the event, is the event going outside, so for example, is the event, are they running down the rail trail, running down the main roads? If that's the case, then they would probably.
It's culmination of that, yeah, they use the rail trail and they had food vendor trucks, variety of things, it's usually once or twice a year.
Then I would say they probably need a permit. If they're going on a rail, if they're going on a rail trail and they're having food vendors.
How many do you, on a rail trail, there's normally a certain cutoff limit, right, you have, Peter?
My last one.
Call it an event on a rail trail, is there a certain cutoff number of people you have? Okay. Okay. Right. Right. Right.
But it's, and the same thing too, is if they're having an event, even if it's ten people on our rail trail, and they're not insured, and somebody gets hurt.
So the, I'm sorry, is the event on the rail trail or the?
It's accommodated.
It's utilizing, it's like.
Utilizing the parking.
Every day they're open, though, they do use the rail trail.
Well, and which they're allowed.
Which is like ten to fifteen.
But an event is like, like the, a four K run.
I'm fine with that, too.
But I think this is.
You're, you're meaning like they're having an event where like they invite other CrossFits and they go up on the rail trail and run whatever. But are they utilizing the rail trail?
Right.
Like, like they may do some type of activity.
On the rail trail?
That comes away from what's happening. And they'll go up on the rail.
I would say if they did an activity on the rail trail, then they would need a permit, if they're not, then they wouldn't.
Okay, we can go around and around. I would suggest that you and I, John, you, we get with the people that run that place, and let's sit down and have a talk with them. It's all we can do.
Okay.
All right?
Again, I'm not trying to be.
Sorry, listen, that's, that's your right.
Hold on, Peter's trying to. Okay. Okay.
And they did that? Okay, so when they had the event, they did contact.
Okay.
They do it every year.
We'll go have that discussion, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. God bless you.
Mike? Okay, uh, privilege of the floor, anybody else, if not, we're gonna move to motions and resolutions.
All right.
Motion to approve the minutes from the May third, twenty twenty-three Town Board Workshop Meeting.
Motion.
Ms. Adifrenio, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, motion carried, resolution to authorize payment of vouchers as allotted by the audit committee?
Motion.
Second.
Ah, Cooney, Adifrenio, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion, uh, C, motion to appoint Scott McCarthy to Ulster County Planning Board for twenty twenty-three?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carried. Uh, resolution D to amend the working hours, Town Lloyd Highway to, you know, to start six thirty to two eight, to two thirty, effective May twenty-ninth through Labor Day, the recommendation of Highway Superintendent Richard Klotz.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Okay, uh, E is a resolution to hire the following lifeguards for Barry Ann Park at the recommendation of Frank Alfonso, Recreation Director.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, F, resolution to hire the following summer counselors for Barry Ann Park at the recommendation of Frank Alfonso, Recreation Director. And the names are listed, motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay, uh, Ah, Cooney, Mazzetti, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, okay? Uh, resolution G, whereas the Town, the Lloyd, Town Lloyd Events Committee has organized Spring Fest in the Hamlet on June third, twenty twenty-three, and whereas Bad Seed Cider of forty-three Bailey's Gap Road are planning on tending and have requested permission from the Town Board to sell beer and/or hard cider at Setavan in a designated roped-off area, where the Town Board is desirous of granting said permission to the business as requested. Therefore, it's resolved as follows, the Bad Seed Cider Company has hereby granted special permission to sell beer, to sell and serve beer at Spring Fest in a designated roped-off area on Saturday, uh, should be June twenty-third, I'm sorry, June third, twenty twenty-three.
Motion.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, well, okay. Uh, I didn't read the last part, if you could read it there.
Man, you missed it.
Okay, yep, I did miss it, I was so focused on the date. Okay, resolution H is to authorize Chief Janso to purchase five in-car police cameras and equipment from Axon Enterprise to replace the old in-car police cameras at a cost of forty-eight thousand, four hundred twenty-three dollars, payment is not due until twenty twenty-four.
Motion.
Motion.
Just one question.
Hold on, hold on, so mo- a motion.
Say discussion.
State discussion? Go ahead.
Is that, I assume this is a probably state bid?
Um, there's not state bid on these, they only make, there's only three companies that make them. You gotta match them up to the body cam cameras.
And, and I gotta tell you, I really appreciate the email he sent, and I wish we could get them right now, because.
Yeah, there's about a s- eight monthly time.
Right, he, he said that he had to order them now, because he's not gonna get them maybe even for twelve months. And what happens is the body cam works off of this, where ours don't right now, and also the taser works off of it.
Everything comes off it, right.
Ours are very old and not working.
Email tells.
Is there any way, Dave, we can see if he can exp- expedite them?
Well, once he gets the PO in, then he could work with the company to try to expedite.
Because I would support him getting them sooner than later.
The other thing we've done is we're, there's a grant he and I submitted that we might even get this paid for, so.
That would be great too, but I, I think for safety, we need to get.
So, um, once he gets the PO in, then you could work with the vendor to try and expedite it, right? You can't do it until you get the PO in.
Correct.
They're not gonna give you anything until then. Okay, so, um, let's just do a roll call on this one, Ray Bell, please?
Yes.
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 Okay, motion carried four to zero, thank you. Okay, resolution I, and I see we have both Charles and Heather there, if we have questions on this. This is the, uh, resolution to authorize myself to sign the agreement with Sina Cusson to complete the John Burrows Black Creek Trail.
You're gonna paraphrase this, I hope.
What's that?
You're gonna paraphrase this, I hope.
Sure.
We have a good view here.
Yeah. Yeah, so I won't read this whole resolution, but basically, this is the agreement for, for us to, uh, work with Sina Cusson, they have a grant. You know, we've, we've committed some matching, both cash and in-kind labor uh, in past, in, you know, that was voted on in past years. And I know they've talked to Rich about the in-kind, and he's been, uh, in sync, I know they've, they've changed some things, and they have to get, I think the first thing they'll have to do is get a survey done, and they have a Greenway grant, they're gonna apply to that, so, um, with, you can read this whole thing. Um, I'm gonna kinda go to the end of it here, wow, it's four pages.
Yeah. I'll just, it's really gonna be a great improvement for the town, I, I, I'll read a motion if you'd like.
Yeah, yes, we get a motion to sign this agreement.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great job, guys, looking forward to finished and enjoy the project.
Okay, and now this, uh, okay, so resolution J. So, um, this is, whereas the intersection of Chapel Hill Road and State Route forty-four fifty-five at Town Lloyd is a very busy intersection, particularly during peak commuter times in the mornings, afternoons, and weekdays. Whereas the Town Boy, Town Board of the Town Lloyd has been concerned with safety of the said intersection due to various factors, uh, including but not limited to its configuration on the curve, the limited sight lines, the amount of traffic that passes through it. Whereas the Town Lloyd has previously requested a turn study for said intersection, it was completed in July of twenty-two, which indicated a large turn count at the intersection, particularly in the morning and afternoon commuter hours. Whereas due to current construction on Tilson Avenue, uh, and the Tilson Avenue Talk Drive intersection located in the town, traffic is being diverted to this intersection at Chapel Hill and forty-four fifty-five, and as a result, um, the Department of Transportation has installed a traffic signal at the said intersection on a temporary basis. And whereas the Town Board of Town Lloyd feels it would be in the best interest of the town, its residents and all persons using said intersection, have the traffic signal set at the intersection on a permanent basis, and the Town Board wishes to request that New York State DOT conducts a traffic study to determine whether the traffic at the intersection warrants the installation of the traffic signal on a permanent basis. Now therefore be it resolved that, for the reasons set forth above, the Town Board of Town Lloyd hereby requests New York State DOT to conduct a traffic study at the intersection of Chapel Hill Road and New York State forty-four fifty-five, located within the town, term whether traffic volume at the set, at the said intersection will warrant the installation of a traffic signal at the intersection on a permanent basis.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, Mazzetti, Adifrenio, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, okay, motion carried. Okay, resolution K. Okay, so this is now, um, related to the grant I was talking about for the ECC. So K and L are both, um, contracts for the two consultants, Prism and G I, which is all paid for by the grant. Uh, so this, these motions are both for me to sign a contract with them.
Dave, can I ask, you want me to, discussion, or can I just ask you a quick question?
Sure.
Do, do we know, do we know who the consultant is, or we have to hire that someone?
No, it's, uh, G I E consultants on the first one, and Prism, I believe, on the second one.
Right, and how, and how did we come about getting them, Prism, I don't know who the other one were?
They came from, uh, the, the Conservation Councils worked with them before, and they've used them before. So it's kind of the recommendation of, I think, Neil Curry and somebody else. Okay, so resolution K, um, let me just kind of brief through this one. The, the town seeks to hire the consultant to investigate the Chataki Lake, uh, short and long-term health, uh, specifically on aquatic invasive species. Uh, assessment seemed the first phase to a larger Black Creek watershed. And the town's negotiated with New Jersey, New York New Jersey Trail Conference, and will hire G I consultants to lead all project management, uh, coordination, conduct the Fool Lake Aquatic Survey, a northern, northern cricket frog survey. And, uh, and, you know, and to prepare a summary, a memorandum detailing the results, uh, et cetera, on, as you can read it there. So now therefore be it resolved, the Town Board does hereby approve the Town Lloyd, New York, New Jersey Trail Conference Agreement as attached here too, to make part of the Exhibit A, um, and hereby authorize supervisor to execute said agreement on behalf of the Town Lloyd.
You're doing two together, correct?
Making a motion.
Putting, you're putting, um, you're motioning for K and L together?
Uh, we can do K and L.
Let's do them together.
Yeah.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, Fredo, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, okay, so K and L are good. Okay. M is a motion to authorize the closing of the following streets, Philip Avenue North to New Paul's Road,